Turn it off.
Yeah, I just had to get up there. Yeah, we're good. Okay, President Ferguson is absent. Councilmember Gerard. Councilmember Burns. Councilmember Fagan. Councilmember Cresser. Mayor Gerard. Junior councilperson Malachi is absent. Borough manager Snyder. Borough solicitor Harper.
All right, item one. We have the approval of the meeting agenda. I have motion to approve the agenda of the February fifth, twenty twenty five.
Make a motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Stevens, seconded by. Councilmember Burns, Secretary Larry. Seconded by Councilwoman Cresser. All those in favor? All right, item two, public input. Anybody here would like to arise, state your name, address, and your reason for addressing council and push the button over there to get Korean light for the microphone. All right, item three, announcements.
Next borough council meeting, February nineteenth, regular meeting at seven P M. in council chambers. The next planning commission meeting is scheduled for Monday, February twenty fourth, at six P M. in council chambers. Hurrock is scheduled to meet Wednesday, February twenty sixth, at eight A M. in council chambers. And there will be a zoning hearing board meeting for thirty-two Roosevelt Avenue, which is scheduled for tomorrow night, February sixth, at seven P M. hearing council chambers.
All right, item four, reports from standing committees and the mayor, and I'll start with the budget twentieth labor committee reports since our chairman is not here. We have nothing to report at this time. Planning, building, and zoning committee report.
Yeah, so we had our first meeting of the of the new year tonight before this meeting and went over a few things related with the new rental inspection program and discussed some projects for the year for us to be working on.
The public safety committee report.
We met on Monday night. We actually went over a lot of things. The fight more, drive less. The first part of the grant is the new trails going in for that. And then there's going to be a second part that is going to be implemented between now and twenty forty, which is a lot of bike racks and signs where the trails are going to be, we're riding on them, or actually roadways, I should say. And then we also went over. There was some residents that were concerned about left-hand terms at Vine, why we don't have a turn light for that. And Penda, we actually don't meet the regulations for the amount of traffic to warrant a turn light there, which is the same thing that is going on with Orvila and Calpat. There's not enough traffic warranted in that intersection to have the turn light. We also went over how the traffic enforcement, if you notice, that there was, if they're speeding, or you think they're speeding, you can email the traffic, traffic safety at Hatfield dot org. And you can talk directly to Ken Peck, who is running that department now. And you can give him your concerns for the traffic there. There will also be officers that are going to be available in the summer that will be watching the traffic at about mom's water rice here, so that it'll be a little bit safer and they can explain how the different. Trying to think of the exact word to use. They're going to be watching more for the safety of the pedestrians outside and explaining how the traffic is. Which should be pulled over, which are speeding, which are going normal speeds, and you can go over a lot more of your concerns there as well, and they'll be on foot there. Anything, anything else? Anything else there?
I'm sorry.
Anything else you want to add to that one?
No, we have some, I have completed some, sent some emails to some other residents who had some concerns. And it was addressed at the meeting and I gave them some answers, so I haven't heard back yet, but I presume that they're okay.
All right, and I want to turn this over to our council president.
You don't want to keep going?
No.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, hello, everybody. Apologize for being late. We'll go ahead and continue with our public works and property equipment committee report.
We have not yet met in the new year, so we have no report.
All right. Rich, how about public utilities?
We have not yet met this year, but we have a meeting coming up scheduled for the seventeenth of this month.
How about Hurrock?
Hurrock, we have not met for this year either so far, but we are meeting on the twenty-second of this month.
If anyone has any questions while I'm running through this, just let me know. So just stop me. Madam Mayor.
Oh, I would like to, Lindsay, if you could go to the proclamation. In two thousand and five, the United Nations adopted a resolution designated January twenty seventh as International Holocaust Remembrance Day. This day is both a day in which the lives of those that perished during the Holocaust are honored and in which a commitment to human rights is reasserted. I brought this to the borough, to the council, and wanted to recognize this day in some way. So council and I, we have decided to issue a proclamation honoring the lives of those who perished and those who survived. And we also want to encourage education and awareness of the horrors of this countless victims suffered to ensure that a tragedy like this never happens again. Now, studies have shown that a lot of Americans aren't even aware that this occurred. And worse yet, they're denying that it occurred. So I think we need to bring this to the public's attention, so we have this proclamation. And also Pennsylvania, there were two resolutions introduced in the House and the Senate. It's H R twenty-two and S R ten, basically saying the same thing. And also Senate Bill one twenty-seven introduced by Senator Mastriano. And this is concerning Holocaust education. And apparently facts about the Holocaust are taught in schools age-appropriate levels. And this bill would make it mandatory that that education takes place in our schools. So it's important to bring this to everybody's attention. And I'll finish off with a quote, those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it. I'm sure everybody is with that. Moving on to more pleasant things. We were notified that the borough will receive the twenty twenty-two grant money. So that should be forthcoming sometime in February. And I also want to say that the commission is trying to arrange a visit to the Mascara recycling facility. Nothing has been finalized yet. I've been trying to get in touch with Mascara and not getting calls back, but I'll keep nailing them. And our council members are invited to attend. I will give more details as they become available. But I think it's really good experience. We visited a couple of years ago. Our borough manager Snyder and councilperson Gerard and, I believe, former councilperson Larry Stevens. And it was really an interesting, interesting time. So I will let you know more about that. And that's all I have.
Any questions for the mayor? All right, if not, we'll go on to item five, our reports and correspondence. We'll start with monthly investment report.
Monthly investor report, including with the cash accounts through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, it was in your packets. If you go to the last page, you give a year total for income and disbursements. With doing some calculations, we had roughly thirty-nine thousand dollars in loss and eighty-eight thousand dollars in gains. If you remember, for capital reserve and sewer capital reserve, two fifty of, for each of that, was taken out to make some payments for Hatfield Borough. So we took that out on our own. We didn't lose that on the market. So just wanted to draw your attention in case you saw four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars and were questioning why it would be so high. For investment tracking through December, we have one of our T notes that's going to be up on the fifteenth of this month. So again, we'll be talking to KeyBank to see reinvest that. It looks like the market is good. Otherwise, we might take our funds and put it into some account that we are getting a little bit more interest on. Harleysville, something else like that, maybe possibly play it. So we'll keep an eye on that.
Any question for the manager? All right, if not, we'll go to monthly E I T and L S T.
The E I T and L S T reports, when you're packeted, you look through January, year-to-date total. For E I T, we're a little over eleven thousand. In twenty twenty-four, we were over ten. So seem to be starting off the new year good. And when we move to L S T, though, we haven't collected a lot. We have two forty-six for the new year versus twenty twenty-four was zero. So everything seems to be very positive in twenty twenty-five.
All right, any questions? If not, we'll go to monthly year-to-date.
Monthly year-to-date in your package, you'll see, don't be shocked that revenues were a little bit lower than expenses. On this sheet, we do have budgeted roughly eighty-two to eighty-five percent. The reason it's down for December was we made two payments for the utility replacement project, and only one of those was reimbursed by the end of the year through North Penn Water. And then there's also some journal entries that we have to make by the end of twenty twenty-four. So those were calculated as part of the program that we do, so it's a little bit off. But mostly it's because we paid out more money than we received because we didn't get the reimbursement until after the first of the year.
Any questions? If not, with those monthly zoning hearing board applications?
We'll talk about thirty-two Roosevelt under new business this evening.
All right, M C P C steering committee.
Montgomery County Planning Commission, we have a steering committee that's meeting monthly to talk about the comprehensive plan for the borough. In January, we met to discuss chapter reviews, look at the demographics in the borough, look at our natural resources. We talked about possibly wanting an environmental advisory committee or an E A C committee. That could be a possibility in the borough. We've talked about parks and open space, and if we want to look into having a shade tree commission or possibly a park and rec ward, those are two options. We did talk about it with planning, building, and zoning this evening. And I know that the mayor and councilmember Burns were really big on Arbor Day and looking into that. So we do think that the shade tree commission would be good to look into enacting that in the borough, what that means. So I'm going to be doing some research on that. And we talked about community outreach as we're going to have a community survey taking place. And we're going to have a public open house April twenty-eighth. So the community survey is kind of similar to what we did when Steve Barr came and started working for us, but it's a lot more detail. So we hope to have a public open house the end of April, and you'll come in, you'll take that survey. They're not due by then. What kind of walkthrough? What do residents want to see in the borough? What do they want to see our parks look like? What do they want to see our street look like? How are they happy with the services for police or fire? Those are all questions that are part of the survey to kind of guide us to where we want this comprehensive plan to take us for the future of the borough.
Oh, question, the E A C and the Shade Tree Commission, isn't that comprised mainly of residents of the borough?
It is, correct, yeah.
So that would be an opportunity for residents to get involved in.
Yeah, that was one of the highlights that they spoke about was it's good to have committees like that where residents can sit on the board. Sure, you can have a couple elected officials, but it's good the way to get your residents to have an input in what you want to see in your parks or, you know, and, you know, environmental advisory or board of services.
Also, is this going to be just related to the borough or is this going to be in conjunction with Hatfield Township?
So currently, we are working on a comp plan for the borough, but there are specific items that will cross over during our planning discussion that we will partner with through with Hatfield Township. So next time, we're going to be talking about transportation, and it might be how that looks flowing from Hatfield Township through Hatfield Borough back to Hatfield Township. So there are specific portions of the comp plan that Hatfield Township will ask their input on how they feel about it.
On the next community survey, would it be worth throwing in single trash hauler again?
Yeah, I'm trying to think. That's not what I'm going to, I'm looking at Jimmy too, I don't remember that. But I can certainly add, there's like the questions about like services and those, so it could probably fit in that category.
Yeah, I think of last year, that question was on the survey, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, it's very fifty-fifty. Comes back. I think that's the second time we've done it. It's fifty-fifty, but I'd be happy to talk to the planning commission and add that.
Rich, were you going to say something? Oh, okay. Thought you were, sorry. All right, if there are no questions, we'll go on to Steve Barr's report.
Just highlighting Steve's report, mostly just his work on the Hatfield train station, as that's what he's been concentrating on over the last several weeks. He created a microbrewery list with over forty-three microbreweries that are available in the area that might be looking to expand, might not be looking to expand. He has created kind of a criteria list for tenants. I've had several meetings with him. He's actually met recently with someone that's interested in the property, who is also interested in working with two other local businesses to kind of have a partnership. So that seems very promising. So he's just kind of focusing a lot of his attention on getting a tenant for the train station. And also kind of creating these drawings and plans for where he's going to leave us in March with like, kind of like a future goals or like things we can look to kind of implement, maybe businesses want to do outside seating or those types of things, so.
All right, any questions? If not, we'll go on to our police department report.
Nothing new to add to your report.
All right, any questions for the L T? All right, if not, we'll go on to our fire department. Report.
Yeah, we're a little late because our, our people, folks, we will use with our calls and and our system are, so they're bored of much. We're asked fourteen calls on it, but we're in my first week of February, we're already pushing sixty calls.
All right, any questions? If not, we'll go on to E M S.
There was no E M S report in that.
How about public works, Steve?
So the only real thing, I'll really highlight two things really, is just lots of plowin' salting, which will continue in the month of February, unfortunately. The big thing I want to highlight is we finally got rid of the road plate on West Broad Street after eleven years of it sitting there. So that is now gone and back to workshop. Big accomplishment.
All right, any questions for Steve? No questions on the storm, on the plate? All right, how about our engineer report?
Judge's report was in your package, just highlighting that the work on West Broad Street continues. Sixty-seven percent of the storm sewer being replaced has been completed. Construction on the culvert through the private properties across West Broad Street started this week, mostly with tree work and then additional work starting later in the week when impending. So we're continuing to move forward with that project. I will highlight under miscellaneous, as this got brought up during planning, building, and zoning committee, that we know that there is an issue. We've talked about that. There's an issue with the Heather Meadows pond, why it's not retaining water, and we have instructed our engineers to give us some options of what we can do out there. Fill it back up, fill it in, make some adjustments, like we're not committing to anything. But they're going to have kind of three options outlined with cost, permitting, everything for the May town hall. So we can present something like, we really want resident feedback, that this is a big part of the park, a big part of the Heather Meadows community. And we don't want to make any decisions on the future of the pond, obviously without asking the residents for their input. So we will have something to look at for May and kind of put that out to the residents and kind of get an open conversation of, we know that there's an issue out there. We don't know what's causing the issue, so we're doing a lot of research for that as well. So hopefully we'll have some good paths forward that we can share in May.
And I don't remember the pass forwards, do they all involve trying to or having an answer to what the cause is before we put anything in place?
Yeah, so, yes, like researching, part of it is researching why this happened. It did happen because what we think, maybe a pipe was closed or, you know, is it just, there's not a lot more rain and it was fed by the base? But we don't know. We're not sure. Work upstream at the Del Webb community or up the room, I'm sorry, Del Webb could have impacted this. So we're kind of looking at everything at all angles, so that will, that's part of it.
Any questions? If not, we'll go on to the zoning officer, building code, and property maintenance report.
The report was in the package, just highlighting a couple of notice of violations that he sent out for new total. So some, purpose on South Main, conversion, two conversions from single-family homes to apartments, so those are zoning issues. And then some warnings for shoveling sidewalks. The rest was just generalized permits and inspections that he completed.
And the convergence to the, to the apartments, was that part of the new apartments? Inspection process that we have, is that, is that why those were flagged specifically?
No, it was residents flagging other residents.
Okay. I thought maybe your new process was taking.
We would have found it during the new process, but no, these just happen to be complaints that we received anonymously.
Okay.
That scared them, following your thought pattern.
Being a buckeye, you should be scared. All right, how about fire marshal and safety?
Fire marshal's report was in your packets, initiated by a type of eighty-seven percent completed with seventy-six percent pass rate. So we'll continue to chip away at that, along with implementing the rental inspection program. So you might continue to see that eighty-seven percent continue to go for a couple of months. We're trying to balance a new program that's coming online with the same hours that are, that we still have for the code department. So we'll see how that works for, for this year, but we are still going to address fire safety while we do the rental inspection program.
Any question? All right, pool advisor?
There was no pool advisory report included in your packets, though I do know that they met. And all three of our members, I believe, were present, including our new member that he just appointed in December.
Any questions about the reports? All right, if not, we'll go on to item six, the manager's report.
My report was in your packets, pretty much the same as it was a couple of weeks ago with the land development and utility billing. Want to highlight the items of interest at the end. So please do not forget that we are hosting the Montgomery County Borough Association Dinner between Hatfield, Sauter, and Telford. If you have not responded to me, please do so by, I believe I wrote, February fourteenth, so I can give them notice how many people are coming from Hatfield. So send me an email or text or call me and just let me know if you'll be attending. Next, I just wanted to include the articles between Pennsylvania and P J M. I know these were shared previously, but just wanted to let you know kind of the status of what's going on between Pennsylvania suing P J M and P J M coming back. Looks like they've come up with some type of short-term resolution for at least this auction that's coming up this year. We'd love to see a long-term solution and a long-term plan, so hopefully the governor will continue to put pressure on P J M like he has. And we can see some positive impacts to electric in the next several years, instead of just these capacity increases. And lastly, just wanted to highlight that I did create a twenty twenty-five budget highlight in the packets. It talks about expenses, revenues, projects, your impact to real estate taxes, your impact to electric rates. And then a article, this is what it looks like. It'll be in the informer. It's also posted on the website under our budget section. Then also next, I created this, like, why are my electric rates rising? Kind of talks about capacity costs going from two-point-two billion to fourteen-point-seven billion over one year period of time, just in the last auction. It gives an explanation of like P P J M is to our residents, what that role that they play, how that impacts us, and how this is going to impact the borough budget and ultimately your electric bill. So this is also on the main page, this specific is on the main page of the borough website. So when you click at the top, you can toggle over and highlighted in the main section and also under the sewer and electric section, just to give everybody kind of an update of what's going on. It does not include any rates from Pico or P P N L versus ours, because they didn't announce their rates yet. So when that comes out later, I will certainly make a comparison so people can see that it wasn't only the borough rates that had to increase. It was Pico or P P N L or Med Ed, God bless you. We'll do that. Same thing for the impact to real estate taxes. It does highlight the increase, but we fell right in fifty percent, whereas where we are in the county, so we're right in the middle. So it, you know, wasn't a highlight that we're a lot lower than ten anymore than it was several years ago. So we just put what it would be an increase for your year and month, the average. Like you said, these are on the borough website. They will be exactly like this in the borough informer for everyone that will be going out March, before mid-April will be out definitely for Earth Day. So if there's any questions, let me know. And again, I will make some adjustments as we get numbers in from our I O U utilities.
No question, but compliments to you and your team. This is very comprehensive, so. All right, any questions for the manager? All right, item seven, we got the zoning hearing board application for thirty-two Roosevelt, and I'll turn it over to our solicitor.
Great, come to our attention of the zoning board application. Well, this one is a little bit unusual. It's in a zone that doesn't permit accessory dwellings in separate buildings. And it is an accessory dwelling in a separate building. Somebody is repurposing their garage and wants to turn it into a separate dwelling unit. That's unusual, and I think we discovered it a little bit by accident. And the concern is that the zoning board has in the past never granted a variance for this, but this, this is unusual. We didn't know whether you wanted to take a position as borough council. Borough council can take a position for, against, or no position, and can send the solicitor to relay that, you know, whatever it is. And I know, because I have to run into one of our zoning board members, they're wondering if borough council is going to take a position. I said, I don't know. We got a meeting for the year, so we'll ask, you know? Because I also don't know whether the neighbors, I know the neighbors would have gotten notices, but I don't know whether any of you have heard from any of the neighbors or whether they're all fine with it. It's, so that's really the issue. Do you want to take a position? Do you want to send the solicitor? And do you want to take a position for, against, or no position, or whatever? I mean, I think the zoning office is a little worried that they might make sure the zoning hearing board understands the issues. And if you told me to go, I would take the zoning officer, have sworn in and have testified as to the. As to the exact provisions of the zoning on this, which shall permit accessory apartments and don't permit them in separate buildings. In that zone. Okay, so that's kind of where we are.
Yeah, so. I think the concern or concern I have is that we're going to open a precedent. We're going to set a precedent now. There's there is a precedent and that is that we don't allow that.
Correct. That is the current precedent.
Correct.
Although any zoning solicitor will tell you that every property is unique. And just because you allow one doesn't mean you allow one another. But there are many properties that are very similar to this in that neighborhood.
Right. Now, are they in the same zoning?
Yeah, that's street Roosevelt Avenue is all same zoning.
What's the zoning?
R three, R three, R three one side, R two the other side.
Okay.
And you say we have, there are residences there that have?
No, they're, no, I'm saying they're civil or health.
Okay, they could want to do that.
That could want to do that. But you know, really, if you want to go that route, you're better fit with being permitted in the R three zone. With certain standards. You know, if that if you wanted to do that. The zoning board is supposed to weigh whether the property can be used as zoned. I'm pretty sure this property can be used as a single family twelve. I think it already is. You know, which is how it is so. And they have not permitted this in the past and this will get.
But it was a garage previous?
Yes.
It was a garage.
So so what you're saying is that the existing residence is just an addition on, and this is the garage to that residence that already exists?
Correct.
Okay.
But it's two variances because where we do allow accessories, we allow them in the property, in the house. Okay. And you know, we don't allow them in a garage next door.
Is this an attached garage?
No.
Okay, so it's okay. It's a detached garage. So that's a different.
So it sounds like they're turning it into a rental unit or a in-law suite or something like that.
Correct. Although they don't say in-law suite, it does sound like it would be a rental tenant. And if you look at it, it's in your, it's in the packets. They have little pictures, no, but. Actually floor plan of what they wanted, yeah, there.
What's the square footage of that? Do we know? Of this?
Oh, the parcel is eleven thousand four seventy or the square footage of this.
Of the building, of the garage, yeah.
I don't see it on the, I don't see it on the plan here.
It's like twenty-one feet by.
Twenty-one, six by twenty-four, twenty-four, four.
Right, twenty-four by twenty-one. What is it? Multiply it first.
Four hundred and something for twenty-four fifty something.
Garage is behind the house. I have the property of the girl buying this.
Yes, and that, the house.
And you're in charge of it there?
Yeah, the house and the roof.
Do you know the reasoning behind why this precedent typically did not allow this?
It's not allowed by the zoning code. Zoning board is to uphold the zoning code unless there's a hardship. And the change will not affect the character of the neighborhood. And it depends on whether it's a use or dementia. Like if they're asking for, I need a twenty foot side yard and I only have ten feet, that's an easier variance to get. You're asking for a use, which is what this is, an accessory dwelling, really. That's hard. You have to prove you can't use the property as it is zoned because that's what you're supposed to prove. Can't use it as zoned or not.
But it's currently a garage, right?
Currently a garage.
So they can use it for a garage.
Right.
I don't know that this is a great idea.
Working in and that's how Bob became aware of it.
Yeah.
And would they have to apply for another EDU for the property, I'm assuming?
That's a good question. That could be made a condition of the. Of the zoning grant if they're granted, but no one's actually raised that issue.
Well, wouldn't it, wouldn't it be because they have a bathroom included in here? So that would be logical to do that.
No, I'm just asking the question. I think if did they apply for one already? So it's.
Not that I am aware of. Because they would have applied to the boroughs for the EDU.
Yeah. The I I guess it sounds like from our zoning hearing board representative. And from what I'm hearing so far, unless there was, and to your words, madam solicitor, a hardship that required this. Then I don't know that council would would opt for giving him a variance for it at this time.
We wouldn't be in favor of it.
Right, right.
So would you want to send me with the zoning officer to make that point?
Yes.
Okay.
So do we need to make a motion for that?
You will under action items. Okay, sorry, action items, sorry. And when you want to do it, you would just table that.
Right, right.
Right, because the hearing is tomorrow night. So you got.
You're saying we're opposed?
I'm saying that it sounds like unless unless some unless, for example, you think differently. So far, the the response has been we wouldn't see a need to give them a variance for this, the supportive area.
I think we're setting a dangerous precedent. Do you want to hook it up to the floor and see if it makes any count? People, the residents, maybe a lot of people.
That's true, though.
Do that.
Yeah, yeah. So Councilman Burns is is actually actually is if any of the residents that are in attendance might have an opinion on it. I don't know if any of the residents live in, oh, if you guys live in that area or not, but.
Is it, is it like an in-law place? You know, like one of their parents there, then I would reject that. They didn't say it was an in-law place. They did or did not, they did not.
I think.
In their application, they do not ask for an in-law suite. They ask for. A separate unit.
A rental, yeah.
Yeah, from the sound of it, there's no specific where they they could actually rent it out to a third party. And, you know, a money one. It's not like it would be a relative living in there.
I mean, my my opinion is based solely on the issues that we've been having. That we've seen down through the years with rentals and stuff like that in the borough and the complaints that we get from the people that live around them. So now we've got this four hundred square foot little teeny thing that we're wanting to put up there. You know, essentially a tiny house, if you will, that I I don't know if we want to get into that, you know, we're we're trying to get. You know, we had to put a rental inspection program in place because the owners of the properties that we have now. Don't take care of them the way that we want them taken care of. My, that's just my opinion.
Well, that's one of the reasons that we did it.
Right.
I think the the concern and why you said that every property is unique and you can make unique scenarios, you can make every situation unique. The question is, is how do you accept for one and not for another if someone else comes up with the same idea? And so now we have a slew of these going in, you know, especially in that area.
And if you want that, then you should change the zoning ordinance to permit it.
Right, change the code, yeah, change it in that area, so.
Size a little hot, the, you know, whatever.
And we discussed that, discussed that at the planning, building zoning committee today about this year. One of our projects is going to be to look at the zonings, the zoning.
Right, if you're doing your comprehensive plan, which the manager reported on that you are. Sometimes if you want changes, then you have to change your zoning.
Right.
So if you want this, like you want everybody to be able to convert their garage into a separate dwelling unit, then that would be a change to the zoning code.
Right. Do you want to go around the horn and see if there's some favor or not?
Well, I mean, it's on for an action item, so we can just vote on it here in a little bit, so. If everyone's okay with that, unless we want to have some more discussion on it, so.
I think the action item is listed as to like you would vote to send your solicitor to the hearing. So you can amend it.
We have to amend it, so, yeah.
You can say to oppose or whatever you would like her to do if you were choosing to send.
Well, my whole question would be if the zoning hearing board is opposed, if you don't know if they are or not, but typically historically it would be.
Yeah, they've.
I would be more than telling you don't have it a position, I would think. I need it to the zoning hearing board to make that discretion personally. I don't hear that strong an argument against it, other than you don't want more of these. But I think the zoning hearing board's job is to take each case on a case by case basis. I don't know. I mean. If somebody wants to do this, and I I mean, I feel like they they should have the opportunity to bring to the zoning hearing board, which I suppose they will. But if you, I don't know. If you're that strongly opposed, I guess we can impose it, but I I think we should be, I don't think we need to send Kate to tell them to oppose it.
Well, and to clarify, really, we would just give our opinion, but it's still up to the zoning hearing board to make the final call. So all we're doing is giving our opinion.
Purposeful to the solicitor so that that we can put the zoning officer on the stand and have him testify. You know, as to what's permitted and what's not in that zone.
Yeah, it's a document for the.
Answer questions documented and document how. How we found it. The other thing is I think we already have one of these on appeal. The only, I wondered where somebody tried to convert their single family dwelling into a twin.
Yeah, that, right, yeah, that was on on Main Street. That was a single family home and they wanted to rent it as two individual units. But it was all at.
But it was all attached.
Yeah, it was attached. It wasn't somebody wanted to rent their garage or transfer that into, whether it's a rental unit, in-law suite, whatever they're choosing to do. Yeah.
And I think we do permit it sometimes and it's in the house, but not garage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And later that too, you could also possibly limit it and say that you could do it however. You could have only be with a person who's related to the family living in the main residence, not for rental for profit.
Right, I actually represent a township where they allow in-law suites but not renting units. And so when they come in front of the zoning board and they took the zoning board granted and they're in the house. Okay, you know, it's it's.
It's still in the house, right. It's it's all attached, okay.
We make the applicant promise that they won't rent it to somebody who's not related to them. And sometimes they make them put it in the deed, okay? But yes, that that would be a different zoning ordinance that could be put in. And and the zoning hearing board could have that as a condition, but they didn't ask for that. Like they're not asking for an in-law suite.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Some of the things we should not take position, but we can give that up to the local.
You want, why don't we do this one? Just take a quick tally. So one in favor of no position. Michelle? Are you okay?
Uh, no, no, I I would like to see it stay as is.
Okay, so no variance, okay. I would say the same thing, no variance. Three for no variance.
I would say a stipulation of no rental, but you could have it for him, a, you know, a relative living in there.
Okay.
I don't know how you want to phrase that.
So I would say no variance, but if they were to reapply and put some conditions, we would be willing to hear it.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. So why don't we amend action item nine to state that? Yes, we'd like to solicit her to go and take the position that councils at this time not willing to give a variance.
Not in favor.
Not, it's right, not in favor of the variance. Good questions, yeah. Anyway, it doesn't mean they can't reapply and come back and, yeah. Okay.
Under different circumstance, like an in-law suite.
Right.
Time on yourself.
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
And then that's something, things building and zoning could look at when you're talking about the comprehensive plan.
Right.
Now, where it should be permitted and where it should not be.
I could see a bunch of other properties that would try and want to do the same thing, so. That would be much for, so, okay. All right, madam solicitor, are we done?
You dragged a vote?
Not yet, so, not yet. I'm just closing, okay. That's okay. All right. We'll go on to item eight, old business. So we have resolution twenty twenty-five dash, what's the number, madam?
Won't be a number until it'll be, it'll probably be O two. We don't want to put a number in case something came before it, but yeah.
Got it, got it, okay, okay. All right, so we have resolution. Sorry?
I said, I think this one's mine, too.
Yes, yes. So oh, we'll talk the old business resolution twenty twenty-five dash number to be determined. Preliminary final subdivision land development for twenty-three North Main Street, the Hatfield Walk. Madam Solicitor?
Sure, okay, I did a draft resolution that was in the packets and available to the public. And it would grant certain waivers. But it would also require as a condition of granting waivers. A six foot high white vinyl privacy fence along the renter property, a six foot tall wooden privacy fence along the McCarty property. Uh, Jay property lines and a six foot high white vinyl fence along the southeastern property line. And in lieu of the required shade trees that won't fit. Okay, so those were things we've been discussing with the neighbors and I believe the neighbors. They have met with the builder and the builders, the developers here and is in agreement with them. The other thing in here is. All the usual things. But because this property requires grinder pumps, they're going to have to get a permit. Well, they they always have to get a permit, I guess, from D E P, but borough council's going to have to approve an operation and maintenance. Agreement that they're responsible for the grinder pumps, okay? And if they don't fix them, because that would be a problem for the borough generally if the grinder pump fails. If they don't fix them, then the borough would have the right to fix them and then lean the property or charge them back if the grinder pump should fail. That would be recorded against the property because twenty years from now, people might not remember, you know, things like that. The other thing is that they would, that this approval resolution would require that they offer you a deed for the open space. But you don't have to accept it. But you, but it would still be deemed restricted against any development. They would also offer you, and I would recommend that you do accept this. The a deed giving you an easement so that people could go through their property down the Thrive Run across the open space and get into our park, which is behind it. Adjacent to it, okay? So that's that's another somewhat unusual condition. But most pieces, most properties are not next door to one that we own this way. Now, um, it's possible it could have an HOA at some point in the future so that. Taking care of storewater basins and things like that are the responsibility of the owner or the homeowners association. I think that's it. The rest of it, it's contingent on satisfying the engineer's review letter, sticking with the requirements of the zoning. Uh, decision that allows this. And we included the Bowman letter, which is the traffic. Traffic letter, but you know, we really don't recommend anything other than we were even talking about. So that's basically it. So that's in your packets. The developers representative is here. If you have any questions or or anything else, or anybody in the public has questions.
Madam Solicitor, I don't remember if I read it in there. Did it also refer to the the streets line painting we talked about for traffic and?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a requirement of a contribution towards that. Did you see this?
Yeah, I did, yes.
Okay.
And it is.
Asking the developers representative to to affirm that he's seen this draft. And he agrees with the conditions that I just recited.
Yes, that's right.
I have a question. I see in our engineers' report that there were five variances granted for this development as well as two waivers. Right, in general, is that an unusually large number of variances? Um, in general, is that an unusually large number of variances to be uh, granted on a development?
This piece is unusual because it was, because it was zoned, um. Okay, the zone designation, the same as, as broad made. It was, it was zoned as part of the core commercial district, although technically, it's not in the. I mean, it's, it's, it's one back from the core commercial district, but it was in the core commercial district as part of its zoning. And so there were things allowed as a result of that that would not have been allowed. In a residential zone, which it backs up to, or abuts, is adjacent to. So I think that's why it had an extra number of variances, it is also narrow and unusual. Um, remember they first came in with an apartment building?
Building, yeah.
Yeah, which, which might have been legal use, but was not anymore acceptable, you know, in that location. So I think what happened was, and the zoning board um, decided that the property was unusual. Was, was zoned unusually for that particular piece. It was sort of, so the core commercial district was made a little wider than just the properties along Broad Street. This, this is right next to the properties on Broad Street, that we talked about, the privacy fence, things like that. So I think that's probably why they got the variance. You want to hear the, the developer have anything you want to say?
No, no, I, you know, we've been in front of you before and I think answered a lot of the questions. And I, I think we're at the point now where we've addressed all of the neighbors' concerns and the professional consultants, so. Yeah, looking forward to even moving on.
That's a question I was gonna ask for the neighbors, so did you guys get everything? Are you satisfied with the other things that he's done, the fences and those other things? Are we good? Are we happy for that?
I didn't hear, I didn't find out, is there a fence going beside my garage? But I never got a walkthrough to see where everything is placed.
Uh, no, so you, yeah, your garage on the property line. And uh, because of the site distance of uh, there's a site triangle that gets created and all of the other interests. The Fisher, you know, a triangle like this, and your garage is kind of in that, so we wouldn't want to be able, we wouldn't want to put a fence that close to. Main street, if that makes any, the fence that we're installing kind of starts. Twenty-five to thirty feet from the main street, so getting to.
That's easier.
Sure.
Explain what site distance is, should residents may not be familiar with that.
Is it, is it possible for a?
Lindsay, can you?
Have one?
Or can you put up Google? Yeah.
I, I think I would like to have.
I'll just briefly try and describe.
Sorry.
So, so our new access drive to Main Street comes together as like a, as a T-intersection. And so uh, to safely look left and right, um. Uh, the code requires a clear site distance, meaning that they don't want to see objects that would block, if you look left or right. And which would preclude putting a fence all the way up to Main Street. Um, and so, that, that was actually one of the reasons why the, the drive is shifted further away from, from your property. Is to allow a greater site distance.
So, does the fence start at her garage?
Yes.
Her property?
Uh, no, her property, so the edge of your property. Right, your property's.
Are garages hooked up to each other?
She has a, like a seating area that I think backs to your garage. Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, the, the, you're talking about the deck area?
Yeah.
Okay, there's the deck and then there's more of my garage, and then there's about two feet between our garages.
Yes, so.
I do this.
Yeah, click there.
Probably goes too far.
Yeah. Is that, can I do that, the oversight?
Yeah, so uh.
So.
Click on the, if you want to do the, like, the overhead, click on the bottom square to the, no, on the other side, right there, yeah.
It's Michael, so the fence starts at her garage.
Then click on, um.
Isn't there like a, don't I click on here and then I thought it did the?
Are you trying to do an overhead view?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, so the equal sign in the middle of that, click on that, that should expand it, at the, right there, yeah?
So when you're looking at that, the res, the draft resolution says. A six-foot-tall wooden privacy fence.
Isn't there a thing that says layers? Isn't there one that was like layers, and you use like a layer sign?
Yeah, there actually should be a way to expand. So the fence starts.
Close out the, on the left, the, is the arrow in the middle? Keep going. Yeah, there you go, that'll give you a bigger view.
Our new driveway kind of comes in here and then. And so that, the, the fence we're talking about starts right around here. So our, uh, we're putting a, a six-foot vinyl privacy fence along this way. Roughly six, seven feet from the property line, so a little strip grass to melt, uh, we're gonna start there.
And the idea is that people who are pulling out won't be able to see right or left if you put a fence on her property line, is that what I hear?
Yeah, so, so obviously, um, you know, her garage kind of acts as, as privacy, uh, so that if we put a fence here. Uh, that, for that slate triangle. So we would need people to see left, so.
You go ahead.
We plan to do, uh, for snow removal, if you build this property in the back there, where are you gonna put the snow? Say, we have instance like January nineteen ninety-six or past thirty inches.
That, that is a good question, um, so, uh, two potential places, um, and again, we, we don't have a plan, but uh, I'll kind of. You can hit the side of the farm. Did it light up? Yeah. Zoom out just a little bit more.
That's why we need young boys.
Okay, so, uh, so our new, our new driveway is gonna come in here and curve a little bit and then go straight back. Um, and then we'll, we'll have an area back here, uh, that, um, we have full-in parking that goes this way. And our building sits kind of here, here, and the, the center drive comes this way. Uh, so for these parking spaces, they'd be able to, if you pull, pull in, you'd be able, you're gonna be able to back out. And so there's some area back here for, for snow, and then uh, if we continued on, there's some, some area over here for stormwater.
Don't remember your plan, you have stormwater management, then our open space, or the required.
That's, that's correct, so, so the stormwater management's like right around here, but then the lot goes like this. And so this area here would be that open space. There's trees, uh, there, there are a, a little section here, uh, that gets pulled out, this tree gets removed. This here gets removed. And then Mr. Renner, along your property, uh, there's also a fence, uh, that starts uh, roughly around here and then. Kind of encloses. Property, again, the, the six-foot white vinyl fence. Any other questions?
So I think that's on for action at the regular meeting.
Mm-hmm, yep. All right. Thank you, all right, so we'll close out this discussion. All right, so we'll go on to um, item nine, our action item, so. Um, can I get a motion to consider sending the borough solicitor to the zoning hearing board meeting? Um, for thirty-two Roosevelt Avenue, the Anacari S. Cameron, the, the Vanco. Hopefully I pronounced it all correctly, uh, scheduled for Thursday, February sixth, twenty twenty-five at seven PM in council chambers. Um, with the recommendation from council that, a recommendation that council does not, is not in favor of the, of granting the variance.
Make a motion?
All right, I got a motion from Councilman Burns, second Councilman Gerard, any questions? All in favor? Opposed? All right, motion passes four to one. All right. Item ten, can uh, I know we're gonna have an executive session, talk about real estate, um. Litigation and personal matters, so can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
I get a motion from Councilwoman Cresser, second Councilman Burns, all in favor? Opposed, there are none, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.